We really appreciate all of you coming and showing your interest in the city. So in terms of our public officials that are here, John Sullivan is the Ward Alderman. He just went down to make sure no one ends up in the gym. Rick Dowd from Ward Two, Derek Tebow, Ward Alderman from Ward Eight, Marty Jack, one of the state reps, is here. Marty Jack, he's from Ward Nine. Steve Buxton, the fire chief, 35 years or so with the fire department and a resident of Ward Nine. So what we usually do is we, I tell you, talk about a few things that are going on in the city and then open it to your questions, your comments on anything that you'd like to ask about. And I apologize if my back is to you. So it'll be just kind of an open forum. So we usually go for about one hour. Some people have other meetings down in City Hall. And in addition, usually people want to leave after about an hour and we're hoping you'll come back next time. So we'll keep it to about an hour. So over the past, in recent past, the city has been recognized in a number of ways that we feel very good about. Second safest city in the United States, according to one survey. And for that, we owe our police and fire departments, who do a really, a really good job. We are working with them to try to improve safety because at least my priority, and I think of the Board of Aldermen, is to make, make the city even safer. With the fire department, we are going to improve the obsolete and really broken, what's called the Opticon system, the one that notifies people and, well, controls the stoplights at intersections. That is worn out and not working very well. And that, improving that, replacing that will improve safety because the fire trucks are coming quickly to the intersections, could be motorists as well. So we improve safety in that respect. We're also improving, buying a couple of big fire trucks soon, and we'll also be improving the communications that take place to notify firefighters in the stations regarding the calls that are being made, and they do about 11,000 a year. With the police department, we just added some new cruisers. We authorized two new police officers this past fall to bring the total authorized force But the police department is short. All police departments, it seems, are having a hard time hiring people. So they are, it varies, they've got people coming in, some people retiring, but it is around a dozen or 14 officers short out of the 179. And so we are working with them to try to improve their recruitment in the sense that we've maintained the best pay for police of any other department in New Hampshire. They have undertaken something that has helped, which is, for the first time, they are actually hiring officers from other departments, smaller departments in New Hampshire. This, something they hadn't done before until fairly recently, but that has two advantages. It brings more people in. And number two, when they do come in, they're nearly fully trained. So within a few weeks, they can be on the street and rather than waiting for the police academy and basically nine months to a year of training before they actually are on the street. And recently, an interesting project. If you talk to the police department, when you do, and this we discussed in great detail on one of the crime watches, if you take the example of a second shift, which is basically 3:00 PM to midnight, the busiest shift, they maybe get 120 calls, maybe 100 to 120, to which they respond. But only three, say, on average, two or three of those calls result in an arrest. Because most of the calls aren't really crimes in progress or anything like that. It's various problems that people are, people are having. So they believe it would help them. And so often it's some mental illness, social problems, domestic problems, things like that. They believe it would help them to have mental health people working with them so that when they, the police department feels it would be more helpful and appropriate, they could bring with them the mental health worker or, in certain instances, send the mental health worker or social worker to the call in the first instance. They point out that oftentimes, if there's, you know, someone is very agitated, a police officer showing up at the front door actually is counterproductive because it just makes the person more upset. So we're working to, with the health department, this is not finalized yet, but working with the health department on a grant that they have received to try to place one or two social workers in the police department. Social workers, mental health workers. But that's still in discussion and in progress. Other things that are going on, you might have heard about community power. This is something that is coming up quickly. Community power, it was authorized by the legislature some years ago. And what it enables is a community or a group of communities to buy power for ever-source, as an alternative to ever-source, buy power for ever-source customers at a lower rate than the ever-source rate. And of course, we've seen the electric rates double or more to 22 cents a kilowatt. Now I think it's gone down to 20.6. So Nashville entered a, something called the Nashville Community Power Coalition with 17, 16 other cities and towns and has begun the process of, has prepared for the process of buying power separately from ever-source. Now this would not change the way you were billed. You would still receive a bill, you would still receive it from ever-source. You would not notice much of a change. But if you look at your bill, up near the top, there's a charge for the cost of electric power. And that can be 2/3 of the bill, I mean, depending on the, on the home. The rest of the charge is distribution and other charges that ever-source gets paid for. So when this goes into effect, ever-source will continue to bill you, ever-source will still be paid for all of these other things they do, but the power will be supplied, we believe, at a lower rate. We have, these 17 cities and towns have engaged a company called Ascent, which makes these, works with community power organizations elsewhere in the United States and buys power, sort of in a different approach than ever-source uses. And also Calpine, which is a big bank, to do kind of the, the financial end of it, the back of the house. When that kicks in, you will be notified, or before it happens, you'll be notified by mail. And anyone who wants to opt out at any time can do that and go back to ever-source. So you retain freedom of choice and probably a lower rate with community power. And ever-source customers will go into it automatically. Rick Dowd is on another subject. Rick Dowd is very involved and is supervising our middle school project. Many of the students from here will presumably end up at the new McCarthy School, Bryan McCarthy School on Buck Meadow Road. This is a citywide improvement of the middle school facilities. The other two middle schools, fairgrounds, was completed, expanded and upgraded, solar power, new technology. And that was completed a year ago, this past fall, so in the fall of '21. And when Rick and I visited there, just before it was opening, you know, the staff, the teachers were just extremely pleased with the improvement in the school environment. Penachuk is largely finished and will be, but work is on hold now, will be completed over the summer for, so it'll be done for August, September of 2023, this coming fall. And the new school, which will replace Elm Street, will open in the fall of 2024. And again, they're going to try, they, the school department is going to try to redistrict, keep the schools together so everyone from New Surals would go to the same middle school, presumably that would be the, the new school, rather than elsewhere. Other things that are, there are a lot of things we could talk about. One thing that I know people have been affected by, which is the state mandated, state ordered, state supervised revaluation. What this did is, and this is pursuant to state law, it brings all property, it requires that all properties be, their assessments be brought up to 100% of fair market value. And the, it had an impact on you and raised your property taxes for all homeowners because the value of homes went up, on average, 41%. Commercial properties did not go up, some of them went down, some did not go up very much. The largest taxpayer in Nashville, which is the mall, Pheasant Lane Mall, their assessment as a result of the trend in commercial values, malls, industry, you know, offices, actually declined, and they claim that declined 30%. So there's going to be 30%, $50 million. They say it went down from 150 to 100. Experts that were doing the revaluation think it went down to about 130, but the mall itself claims went down to 100. So what this did is it means that the total proportion of the values of the city, represented by homes, grew. Used to be about 65% of value of the total, total values in the city. As a result of the fact that the residences went up so much and the commercial did not, the residents now represent more, closer to 70% of the entire value. And because state law says the taxes have to be allocated pursuant, you know, based on these assessments and based on value, it, it means that the proportion of taxes being paid by residences is higher than it was before. So the revaluation does not collect more in taxes, but it simply reallocates as between taxpayers. Now we know that this has had an impact and it's worked a hardship on many people, including, I'm sure, many people here. The Board of Aldermen voted to increase the elderly exemption for those on fixed incomes, those who qualify, as well, which is already the best in New Hampshire, but, and also increased the income levels that are, that qualify a homeowner for the exemption. So that's an effort to help those who are really most strapped by an increase in property Now there are many other things we could talk about, but why don't we turn to your questions in a minute? Do any of the Board of Aldermen members, you have anything you want to add or anything like that?
I just would like to thank everybody.
Thank you, John. And Rick, anything?
Yeah, we, a lot of school projects right now. We're also doing, rebuilding Main Dunstable, Birch Hill, thinking of a concept out, little classrooms, putting in a new HVAC system, and a lot of that's being paid for by federal government funds that they gave us that we need to spend by '24. Middle school project's going along fine. McCarthy School, they have a schedule because we haven't had that bad a winter, so they've been able to get all the electric bills prepared. So things are moving along fine.
And what Rick spoke about is the two elementary schools. So the school department received $16 million in Esser funds to improve HVAC. And those are being matched with local money at the two open concept elementary schools, Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, the two remaining open concept elementary schools. So it's not good these days to have open concept, open classroom schools. So this will improve school safety and obviously the HVAC systems at both schools, which are 40 years old, I don't know, 50?
Seventies.
Yeah, 45, 50 years old. So.
Does that include air conditioning?
Yeah.
Yes. And we're also, in those two schools, like we're doing with many of the other elementary schools, we're putting in a new filtration system that takes 99.9% of the pathogens out of the air.
So it should include, it will make things at least better with respect to any new pandemics we get.
Is it truly air conditioning is well going at all schools?
It depends on the school.
Okay, McCarthy Junior High?
McCarthy Middle School?
Middle School, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the two schools which you mentioned, Main Dunstable and the other, those will get air conditioning?
They, they will probably get dehumidification, not air conditioning.
Why are we not going to air conditioning?
If the schools aren't used in the summer, the dehumidification gets it through the, both ends of the summer, fine, so.
Is there a reason we're not considering going to use the schools during the summer because they're an asset to the city?
We use several of the schools, and they are air conditioned. And the updoing all the schools is a huge cost.
But we could also use them all year.
If that was the concept, to change the education to go full year?
And I think post-COVID, that's something we should not consider.
That's Board of A.D.'s decision. Because I told them the other night, I just build the school, it's going to have staff.
Yes, sir.
So I have a question regarding what's happening with.
Okay, now, so that, so we're, we're doing this for local TV, so.
Okay. I'll identify myself, if you want me to look at the camera.
Well, you don't really have to identify yourself. But you can hold the microphone if you want to, you know, if you want them to catch your full face, yeah, look at it.
No, I'm just going to do this facing you. So my, my question has to do, and it's not Ward Nine, but it's about what I call our city.
Right.
Which is the proposal to have that asphalt plant downtown. To me, that's, I can't believe how core an idea that is with how much materials have to come in, how the materials would get there, the times that trucks would be coming in and out, the damage that trucks do, would be doing to the core highway infrastructure in our city, leading in, leading out. What's the status of that? How do we prevent that from happening?
So did anybody, did everybody hear the question? Question has to do with this proposed asphalt plant. This gentleman is saying it's a very bad idea. I agree. So the city is working, and it's on Temple Street, east of downtown, near, you know, near where Corvo Ruthier used to be. So the city is working, the decision is up to the planning board. And this, but the city administration is working hard to present evidence to the planning board to justify a denial. And the reason that this, you asked about what is the zoning status. So the zoning status is complicated because there are two levels of zoning there. So the, the old zoning, that is traditionally an industrial zone, the old, the old zoning that's been there for decades is industrial. And under this industrial type zoning, an asphalt plant is a permitted use. But in order to try to encourage a transition of the neighborhood towards residential without, you know, putting it in a non-conforming status to the people that are there, the city some years ago passed a so-called overlay zone, which adds additional requirements. And it says that any, the overlay zone provides that any new use, any new project needs to satisfy the criteria set forth in the overlay zone. And those have to do with environmental issues, diminution of, the negative effect on property values on surrounding area and some other requirements. Now we say that there is no way they can meet those criteria. But in order to demonstrate that, we have engaged an environmental consultant to testify regarding environmental impacts. We know that the truck traffic would be very considerable. But another important criteria is the applicant needs to demonstrate that surrounding properties would not be negatively affected in value. So the city has engaged an appraiser to testify that surrounding properties would be affected. But one of the big property owners nearby, Forest Properties, which owns Riverfront Landing, has engaged their own expert. And our report isn't quite done yet, theirs is, and it shows clearly that, you know, properties around it would be negatively affected. And in fact, the owner of Henry Hanger, which is very close by, trying to transition that to residential, believes strongly and is going to testify, using these experts, that his property would be negatively affected. So, you know, I think, again, it is up to the planning board. We are not allowed to talk to the planning board members, you know, to try to influence them. That would be some, that would be, you know, a legal violation, but there are experts on the other side. I expect this is going to take some months to play out before the planning board, probably more than one meeting, probably multiple meetings this would be addressed. So we are working, you know, doing everything we can to try to prevent the asphalt plant and to implement the plans, the vision we would have of a more residential area.
Thank you.
And if you go to the planning board meeting?
I will.
It's helpful. It's up for March 23rd. They may open the, it's scheduled now for March 23rd. They may open, they, the planning board may open this, this case at that time. They would never, they would not complete it, but they may open it, although maybe if there's too much information coming at them, all these reports, maybe they wouldn't. But right now, it looks like, you know, there's a good chance they will.
But the planning process, having watched meetings in the past, there is a period for public.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely, definitely, definitely.
So it's just a matter of.
Yes. The applicant goes first, but ultimately, anyone who wants to speak will have the right to do so, including all these experts and any members of the public.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Has anyone thought possibly about switching the project locations with each other for the Mohawk Tannery Residential, put it where you want to put your asphalt plant, and then put the asphalt plant where the land's already contaminated? Then everybody wins?
Well.
Because the asphalt plant would then be on and off the highway, and you don't have trucks in and out of town, you only have them on and off. I mean, you've got two major projects in the city that they're both getting controversy against. Has anyone ever?
The abutting neighborhoods, they're neighborhoods right up against the tannery. There's the Little Florida neighborhood and there's Fairmont Heights, it's called, so they're right up against the tannery. They very much support the project that's proposed and would, I haven't asked them, but I can guarantee you that if we proposed switching housing to an asphalt plant next door, we'd have a bigger meeting than this, I can tell you that.
There's no train tracks.
Well, the, the, the surrounding neighborhoods would not win. You know, they would not.
They're not winning in downtown either, so.
Well, we're hoping to deny it downtown and, you know. And, but that project, I could talk a little bit about what it is. I mean, EPA's been involved for years. Mohawk Tannery is on the river. They closed in 1984 after 60 years of operations. When they were operating, it was very, very problematic, you know, odors really strong in the surrounding neighborhoods and beyond. They couldn't even go outside during the summertime. So they closed, but they left these lagoons of sludge and tannery waste. And it has been there for the last, since 1984. So EPA came in and said that they will help pay for it if there is a private developer involved who will help to contribute. So we could talk through some of the, you know, more of the details of the entire thing, but ultimately, the waste will be consolidated into a single place. 500 units of housing, approximately 536, 46 will be built, a combination of apartments and condominiums. Those should yield at the end, at the end, at the end of the build-out, which would take some years, but about $2 million of property taxes to the city. We will get the cleanup, we'll get EPA's money and their environmental expertise. So in the end, you know, I think there is broad support for the project. Yes, ma'am.
Back in 2016, when you came around, our, our debt service was 254, $254 million. As of June 2022, your debt was 371. And from June through current, you've put another 90 million on. So we, the residents of this, of Nashville are looking at $461 million worth of debt. And you stand there and say, you know, you blame the state, you blame this. Well, you're looking at 254 million compared to 461. We're out of control. And there's got to be, I mean, everybody else is cutting back on everything because of what's happening with inflation and everything, but we just seem to just be spending and spending. Just like with this PAC, I mean, I know you and Oliman Dow wanted, but you know, you forgot to tell the people that you just took out a 25, you know, year lease on it, and we're going to be paying $15 million for the next year just to rent a building that we, we're paying to construct.
That, well, well, first of all, that's not at all accurate, but there, the, there's a rent, but the property taxes and the rent are equal, so it's a net zero.
But we're paying, we're paying for the property tax.
But you want, you want?
I read the, I read the lease, Mr. Mayor, okay? I read the lease. We're also paying for the property tax, we're paying for the property taxes.
Ma'am.
Which is 15 million. We're paying for all the services, the lights, the heat and everything else. So it comes out to figure out, we have $30 million as of June of 2022, between principal and interest. By the time we pay all these other charges, which by the way, we paid for furniture and fixtures in the 20, in the, in the $20 million bond, but now we're renting the equipment again for $165,000 a year, you know, by this, we're going to be paying $56 million for performing on center. And I would like to know what is done for the residents of this town.
All right, well, most of what you said is not accurate, but it's impossible to go through that one by one because there is so many inaccuracies within that, but.
Well, that's what you signed the lease on.
The bottom line is that, yes, a, the bottom line, the first question had to do with the overall debt of the city. Now what are the big projects that the city has undertaken? School project, 100, yes, that costs 120 million. That did, costs 120 million. Paving, we put 37 million into paving. So those things have increased the debt. But are you thinking we shouldn't have improved the middle schools? Are you thinking we shouldn't be paving this?
It would have been cheaper to do Elm Street over again.
No, it would not. The study showed it would have been more expensive.
Not 110.
So you, you know, when I say you, I'm, this is a rhetorical question. Would people prefer that we not pave the streets? So the idea that the debt is a big part of the budget is mistaken. So the city's budget is $300 million, approximately, this year, you know, a little bit more. The amount of debt service, everything, on the property taxes, principal, interest for all these projects, right now, is about $16 million. So when we put together all the schools, the PAC, the, the, you know, all the other stuff that's going on, the paving is somewhat separate. But when we put together all of those projects, about 5% of the city budget pays principal and interest. and interest for everything. So the idea that cutting one project is going to, like, have a major impact on taxes, that is not really true. Also, the city pays down 10, 12, 14 million dollars of debt every year. So to the extent new debt is taken on, to some extent, it is neutralized by the, the principal payments that have been made. Now, the biggest thing we've taken on, the school project, no question about that. And as a result of that, more than anything else, the principal interest payments may rise from 16 to 18 million, say, over the next few years, but still, a very small percentage of the overall city budget. Now, when it comes to the Performing Arts Center, that cost, in city dollars, 21 million, 21 million. The remainder of the money was outside funds. The Newmarket Tax Credits brought in two, around two and a half, 2.4 million. A $1 million anonymous donor came forward. The Bank of America gave $500,000. There was an anonymous donor for 250 and a bunch of other ones, 100,000, 50,000. So the, in addition, there is a, the Performing Arts Center was designed to, based on an economic strategy, economic development strategy, to build a stronger, healthier downtown economy, grow the downtown tax base where there is a lot of potential. There has been underinvestment in the downtown for 100 years. What has the Performing Arts Center already done? Well, you see housing going up on School Street, privately financed, 150 units, 30, 40 million dollars of private investment. The builder there, from Florida, says, if it weren't for the Performing Arts Center, I wouldn't even have thought of Nashville. Now, what is that going to pay in property taxes? 350, $400,000 a year. The debt on the Performing Arts Center costs around $1 million a year. But if we offset that against the taxes coming from School Street, you know, it's, it's less. And this project, this School Street project, is the biggest, if you look around, when was the la, when was the last time that anyone invested that kind of money to build housing on this scale in downtown Nashville? And I'm saying from the ground up. And the answer is around 125 years. Because you think of the downtown or on Chestnut Street, probably 30 or 40 units, but a pretty big project at that time. We need more private investment in the downtown, and we can attract it. Now, we've seen some mill conversions, great, you know, Clock Tower, but that took 25 million of federal money. Cotton Mill, which took a lot of various government subsidies, and then ultimately, as things progressed, ultimately Franklin, Loft 34 and Franklin Street, totally privately funded. But all of those renovation projects, restoration of mills, those are easy, easier to accomplish in a, from a financial point of view, because they are, there's a huge incentive to do a mill conversion, the historic tax credit, which contributes, I believe the number is 40% of eligible costs come back in terms of a tax credit. So there's a huge incentive to do the, the mill conversions, which is great, because the mill conversions have been wonderful for us. But this School Street is the first time someone has come in without the benefit of that and just put in 30, 40 million dollars to build from the ground up. And there are other projects that could go forward in the near future, who could even go forward now, but they, a number of pieces are controlled by people who are trying to kind of make a profit, and they're trying to flip parcels, and we're pricing them too high. But anyway, so the, that, right now, the downtown is a profit center along with Amherst Street and Daniel Webster Highway. They, you know, the pro, the taxes that come in, you know, approximately $6 million, maybe a little less, services in that quarter of a square mile, very, very limited. No, you know, few schoolchildren, no plowing, no garbage collection, police and fire. So if we can grow the tax base downtown and increase the 6 million to 8 to 10 to 12, New South Wales benefits by that. So that's the strategy. Now, you can disagree or be skeptical, but all I want to leave you with, if you, even if you are, is there is a strategy. And it's not just, oh, we feel like building a Performing Arts Center today. Yes?
The big problem with downtown is parking, quite frankly. So whatever you do down there, if you don't put the parking in place, you're, you're fighting a losing battle, I believe, downtown. And I've thought about that for many years. You and I have been here for a lot of years, I know. Jim, I met Jim when he was first campaigning, the first time around, and, and our hair's changed a little, Jim.
Well, mine hasn't, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
So where do you usually park, or when do you usually go downtown? At night or in the day?
I try to avoid it, mostly, because the parking and, and I have to get a parking voucher and, you know, it's just problematic. It's, I mean, you can go to the mall and park free.
Although you'll.
What incentives do you have to go downtown?
So you will park, although at the mall, well, in terms of the perception that things are a problem, we, parking is a problem, yes, we need to work on that. I think there is more parking available than often people realize. There are parking garages, which at, you know, at night, are pretty much open.
And free.
And free.
After what, 6:00 p.m.?
And free. Now, another thing that, if you go down for dinner especially, you should keep in mind, is that the parking spaces which say reserved, and they are in a lot of different lots, mo, many of them are in the Spring Street Lot. The ones that say reserved, those are reserved from like 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and that is it. There's no meter, there's nothing there. So, other than it's reserved for that period of time. So if you go to the Spring Street Lot right now, in fact, my wife and I were saying, well, we're going to go out to dinner, we're going to park in the Spring Street Lot. And there, there will be, and if you don't believe me, come with me downtown right after this meeting. There will be, there will be many open spaces, many open reserved spaces, and we will be able, or you could park there for free, no problem, tonight. And it wouldn't cost a thing. And the meters, of course, only run until 7 o'clock. So I get that we need to work on this perception, but when.
I don't think it's a perception.
Well, we.
I think it's real, Jim, especially during your day.
Well, we've, we had.
I don't know how to resolve it, but I know you're trying to increase what's going on downtown.
Yes.
But without significant parking relief down there, I, I believe, you know, and then if you have all these units coming in, it's going to make it worse.
Yes.
Not better.
So.
I know you do traffic surveys and all of that.
And we do parking counts, but certainly, daytime is more, is tougher, nighttime is right now, easier, but we will work on this problem. And the Aldermen are here listening. Yes?
John Marshall. With the McCarthy Middle School coming online, will the sidewalk infrastructure around the school increase, and about how far out from the school will those improvements be?
Rick would be the best.
Well, the, from, there will be a sidewalk down Buck Meadow all the way up to the school, all the way up the Antonio Drive. And the other sidewalk that will be maintained is on, it's on the street.
Cherry?
Off Cherrywood.
Rich?
Rich Road. That will be maintained, and they want the DPW and the traffic people want the kids to walk down there and go up Cherrywood, save this route. So there's some people like a sidewalk all the way up Buck Meadow, but that would be funded under a separate project under the DPW. It's not a school, it's not school.
We're seeing signs around some schools that say safe routes to school. Is that a program?
That's a program that, that ensures that there are adequate safety measures, like the speed indicators. You'll see the speed indicators on Buck Meadow, the radar, and, and you'll also see the, this, the crosswalks and all the lighting and signage, and the plowing of the sidewalks, that's all part of safe routes to school. We, I had a project, Safe Routes to School, at Charlotte Avenue, Ward 2, and we did everything, repaid the street, changed the parking, adjusted the corner, put in the new lights, so, yeah, safety is a paramount thing when we're talking about schools.
All right.
Comment on that shady lane here as one of the safe routes? It's not plowed. It's not plowed back to, it's only like a foot from where the line is separating the traffic from where the safe routes.
Well, it should be, it should be, so thank you. So Megan here, where's Megan? Oh, there's Megan. So even though she's got the microphone, she's going to write that down and remember it, because we should be plowing to the.
Because I just walked up.
Yeah, right.
Shady lane.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor and Alderman's Alderman for having this type of meeting. I think it's really cool. But I do, I do wish to ask you, several of us here tonight oppose the disc golf project.
Yes.
We have written you, we have stood in front of the Board of Aldermen, you've never given us any type of letter, even a form letter. I get letters from Andy Custer, I get letters from Gian Chihin. Yesterday, I did a campaign to, from the representatives to pass House Bill 231 declaring of cats, and I had a representative call me up yesterday and thank me for that. I'm wondering why you don't reach out to your constituents on a project like this that are opposed and that have questions. And let me just finish my thought. In the beginning, you spoke about safety for the police department and the fire department. What about safety for the people that use those trails? Now, you can't tell me that you think disc golf is perfectly safe, because if we're walking, if somebody is hearing impaired and they're walking down that trail and somebody's throwing a disc, they're not going to hear, duck, here comes my disc, sorry, it's, it went awry and it's going to hit you in the head. It's not safe. And I want to know, what is your commitment to conservation for this city? Because I've lived here since 1969. I don't like to see what's happening. I know that in cities, you do have to have development. This southwest quadrant is going very quickly, what's left of it. And I would like a commitment from you to conserve this land, specifically Robey Park. That's one of the last areas in this city that's, that's, to me, is a crown jewel. You have diverse wildlife, you have prime wetlands and things like that. Lastly, I, I didn't understand something that you said earlier. You said that you couldn't talk to the planning committee about something because it wasn't legal?
Right.
Okay. Why is the Board of Public Works allowed to deal with conservation outside of a meeting? Why are they allowed to have a back and forth, working with conservation on this project outside of a, a regular meeting that public can attend? So that's something that does bother me. Thank you.
Well, you've asked a number of questions about disc golf, but I'm not sure everybody even knows what disc golf is. So disc golf is a, a sport that, where, you know, it's like a golf course, 18 holes, with a basket for kind of a, a disc, kind of, kind of like a frisbee, but heavier. And usually, they're in places where there are a lot of trees and the like, so that there are obstacles, and, you know, people use these, sail these discs and have to get them into the 18 holes. Now, I mean, we're going to have to disagree a little bit about the safety issue. I mean, there are, my understanding is, now, I'm not a disc golfer, okay? So there are.
How do you throw a disc golf?
What?
It's on YouTube.
What?
We saw you playing a disc.
Yes, I, once, one, one time in my life, I threw one.
You did a disc golf.
I did one disc. So once in my life, I did one disc, yes. So on this course, now, my understanding is there are 74 disc golf courses in New Hampshire, and two in Manchester, you know, Pelham, they're all over the place, and people are not getting injured or killed every week, or every month, or every year. I mean, it seems like at least as safe a start as baseball. I, you know, people get hit in the stands every once in a while, but it's very rare. Well, wait, now, can you wait for me to finish? So to me, you know, Robey is an active park, I think, and, you know, we have fields, we have ice skating, we have all this stuff. It's a reasonable place for a disc golf course. Nashville is one of the few, you know, one of, a community of 70-some that doesn't, you know, that doesn't have one. And when it was reviewed, you know, we looked at various places, that seemed like the best place. It is before the Conservation Commission. They are reviewing wetlands impacts. They're taking this very seriously, and they are, my under, I hear that they are not going to be making a decision soon because they want to visit other disc golf courses and see what they're like. And they probably cannot do that until the weather clears, so they're probably talking about May. You prob, you might know all this. But, you know, other people, you know, may not. Now, in terms of conservation, I mean, the city has done a lot in terms of conserving land. I mean, we have, you know, to begin with, we have minefalls, but in this part of the city, the southwest part of the city, there are 400 or 500 acres of conservation land. There are, there are trails, there's all kinds of things. You know, behind Southwest Park, as we call it, all the way up to Conant, all the way up to Countryside, the end of Countryside Drive and Gilson Road, there's 400 or 500 acres in there. Plus, there's the park. I mean, so we are, I'm going to say, doing a lot over the, over time to conserve land so that people such as yourself can go out there and walk, and there will never be anything in the conservation land. There's 110 acres off Gilson Road that people use for, can walk, people use for off-road bike, biking, you know, pedal biking. So there's a lot of conservation land around. So, you know, I think we're just going to have to, I, I mean, to me, disc golf, there's a lot of people who want it, and there's a lot of people who play it, and to me, it's a reasonable thing for that park. Now, I mean, obviously, you don't agree with that, and.
It's not reasonable, I'll tell you why, because it's, it's been a multi-use park for over 30 years, there's well-worn trails, school kids from World Academy go there at their lunch break and use it, employees at lunchtime use it. And I'm not saying every single disc golfer is going to be irresponsible, but there's going to be enough, and there is going to be a lawsuit when somebody gets hit in the head. These discs fly at 40 to 80 miles an hour, and it can fly up to 400 feet. They ricochet them off trees, causing damage to trees. So what you're saying about the baseball court, about the baseball field, you, a reasonable person would know, don't walk across a baseball field, okay? Is a child going to know not to walk in that disc golf space? Is he going to know? I, I don't know. Are you going to close it down to everybody? Because we want to use it. We are the abutters, and we were never, ever told about this until I heard the trees being cut. And there is an impaction, by the state of New Hampshire, found that there was impaction to the wetlands, so.
They did clear, they did clear it, DES cleared it.
Not as of yet. They haven't told me that, because I did call them the other day, a few weeks ago, they were working on it. But my, my question, going back to, is the Board of Public Works allowed to work with the conservation? Because you just said that it was illegal for you to talk to planning, that's a part I don't understand.
Well, I think they're trying to educate them as to, you know, the Conservation Commission has requested that they do various things, and they're informing them that they're doing that. But look, can I just, as you know, there have been many public meetings, many public debates. John has held a meeting totally on disc golf. And sometimes, these meetings in Ward 9, because there are no supporters of disc golf here, but if there were, we could spend the rest of the night debating disc golf, I don't know. Many debates. So I think we need to leave it, the disc golf here, and people can make their own mind up as to whether it's a good idea or not. Yes?
Mayor, just.
Mayor, just, when does something more getting on the ballot for a referendum? And the reason I'm asking is, the PAC was on, always on the ballot for a referendum. This, the disc golf, I, I just, I, I question whether or not the interest is as strong as everybody thinks it is. Why wasn't that put on a referendum? There's other things that, I mean, I trust, you know, we gotta trust our city leadership to make, you know, we pay you the big bucks to make decisions. So, but there's some things, you know, there are just some things that just, we all should have a say. Now, if people don't turn out and vote, they get what they, they deserve what they get, right? But there's just some projects, this seems like it was done under the radar, and, you know, you know, and there's just other things that, I, you know, I'm just, I'm just, what part, what part's something to get on a ballot?
If the Board of Aldermen vote to put it on the ballot, it goes on the ballot. Now, we, although generally speaking, I mean, we, we, you know, this is a city representative form of government. So, probably the city decides, I don't know, makes a hundred, a thousand decisions, I'm not, you know, and, you know, all, uh, any of those could theoretically go on the ballot. So, you know, why this, why not that? I, you know, the PAC went on because there was a very close vote, and someone said, "Well, let's see what the people think. It seems to be an important idea." And in the end, there was a ballot, and in the end, it was endorsed by the voters.
Yeah, I'm not ab, I understand. We gotta trust you to lead. I get that. But did this go to the Board of Aldermen to even be considered to be put on a referendum?
No. But any Alderman could propose that it go on the ballot. It did not because the, under the city charter, the Board of Public Works has jurisdiction over parks. So, the Board of Aldermen doesn't really have a, the Board of Aldermen actually doesn't have a, really a say in this. It's the Board of Public Works and the Conservation Commission.
Mayor, there's a-
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kristi Bussata. I am a resident of Ward Nine, but also a housing advocate in the city and a main street worker.
Yes.
So, I'm on, I'm on Main Street and parking every single day, except sometimes Saturdays. I wanted to say thank you. I feel like the city, over the last few years, has made a lot of really difficult decisions. I have been interacting with a number of people, particularly planning and economic development and community development, and our, the Board of Aldermen. And I have been so impressed with the way really hard conversations have been handled. There are big changes coming to the city, and COVID has accelerated those changes. And, um, so I just wanted to express my admiration and care that has been taken in all of those processes. It, it's truly appreciated, regardless of the side of the aisle that people live on.
Well, thank-
So, I wanted to say that first and foremost, but I also, just sort of as a statement to my peers in this room, um, some of our Aldermen, including, uh, Mr. Tebow sitting in front of me, have newsletters that come out on a regular basis that list what will be considered in each meeting. And as somebody who shows up at a lot of meetings, um, I would just invite you to get signed up for those emails and to, um, to read on a weekly basis what's coming and whether public testimony will be heard, so that you can feel less lost. Because I think, once you see those things coming, Alderwoman Cle also has a newsletter like that, um, you have an idea of what's happening, and you, and you don't feel so crushed by the amount of stuff that's happening. But thank you, most of all.
All right, well, a couple things. First of all, thank you, but the city has a lot of good people working for it, and you've encountered some of them. The Aldermen are really dedicated. And we've got three members here, uh, you know, John, Derek, and Rick. All are totally committed to trying to improve the city. Now, sometimes their, you know, opinions can differ as to what would accomplish that, but the Aldermen are really dedicated. I think this, the city is very well-served by the people that are on the board. And you're right that there's a lot, I mean, you've been particularly involved in housing and affordable housing. We're trying to make some dramatic steps there. You know, uh, people are trying hard. I mean, it's no question about it. Yes, sir. You've, you've had your hand, he's at his-
I appreciate you. Um, got a follow-on question to a couple of others which have been asked.
Yes.
Um, you know, in regards to tannery and regards to disc golf, um, conservation lands, the tannery property, the way it's showing up right now, has a bridge cutting across into Mines Falls.
Yes.
Can you, or can the city guarantee us that over the years, that section of Mines Falls, which is going into disrepair? You know, because, you know, Mines Falls is a gem.
Yes.
It is the city's gem.
Yes.
You know, besides Greeley Park.
Yes.
Um, and there's no maintenance in there. Can you guarantee that that won't lead to some development, where development will be cheaper than the maintenance of Mines Falls?
In Greeley, in Mines Falls?
In Mines Falls.
Mines Falls cannot be developed, cannot be developed.
Okay, but we said the same thing years ago about the Shandor Library, which was, you know, dedicated to the-
Well, the, I don't know what was said about the Shandor Library, but, um, first of all, we would never develop Mines Falls to begin with, all right? But it was funded by a federal recreation fund of some sort, and so there's a formal agreement, formal requirement, that there be no development. Um, and in fact, uh, a few years ago, the city bought a parcel that you think is Mines Falls, uh, down near the Milliard, uh, that big, that big grassy area coming down. That actually was owned, could have been developed, possibly, owned by the Milliard Association. The city bought that to, in part, to prevent development. Now, the bridge you're talking about, we haven't talked, you know, much about the details of the Mohawk, but it's roughly fifty acres. Development would occur on forty, and ten would come to the city in the form of open space. It's an untouched, uh, was never used. And what you saw on the map was, uh, the possibility that we could connect this ten-acre parcel of open space with Mines Falls, so people could go back and forth. Now, the bridge would probably cost around a million dollars. So, you know, it's a possibility, and, you know, but Mines Falls will never be developed. All right?
Can I ask one other question to Steve? Um, early on, Jim mentioned that the Opticon, Opticon system was on the way out. What is it gonna be replaced with?
Uh, so it's a, excuse me, is this a similar system? We're actually evaluating the system to see if we need to complete upgrade, if we can just add on to the system by making some repairs. Uh, there was no budget line, so to speak, to maintain the system throughout the years, so it's in a little bit of a state of disrepair, uh, cause we've just kind of been getting by in a safety component like that, really. We need to do better with that.
Is there some truth that the three, that there are three multiple traffic systems which control the lights, and they don't talk to each other?
Um, so that's a traffic division question?
Well, I'm not saying this is traffic signals. The traffic signals don't talk to each other, because there are three different sets of software involved in the traffic signals.
Yes, so I, I can't speak to that.
Now, that doesn't sound right to me, but the system could be better. There's not, I mean, putting that aside.
And one question, I don't know who would ask this, but can we, like other cities in Southern New Hampshire, change the lights to blinking yellow after eleven o'clock?
God, that was gonna be one.
That's your question?
Well, pardon my question.
All right. Well, we, we have to wrap up, so-
Exit five is, I actually had the police do a study at exit five when you come up from, you know, it's like, you go to the high school, it's like, you're waiting four to five minutes. It's ridiculous. One-eleven, there's like, no traffic, and you're just, it's crazy.
So, the question is, can we have blinking signals now?
Or some, or a trip light or something.
Traffic safety experts, traffic safety experts. Traffic safety experts say it's dangerous. Now-
But every other town in Southern New Hampshire does it.
I don't know. I don't know about these other towns.
Or just a trip light, or some, I don't know.
Well, we do have those in most places.
Well, not at exit five.
And they, sometimes they stop working, especially in the wintertime. So, we will check, now, exit five is, some of these things around the highway are state-controlled, uh, state-controlled intersections. Um, you know, around exit five, around exit six, uh, four, but we'll be glad to check out about-
It's just the most-
We'll, we'll check out about five. We'll check out about five. I know how frustrating it is to wait for the light when there's no one there. Yes, it's really bad.
The other question I had was, I did hear that they're talking about taking a big section of the Robey Park sledding hill for parking for the disc golf. Is that accurate?
That's not accurate, is it?
That's what I-
No, that's not accurate. Okay.
Actually, John?
Yeah, they were, uh, we, in our disc golf meeting, they did discuss, uh, taking, I don't know if you would characterize it as a big chunk, but-
A big chunk.
The top parking lot that is off of East Tunsil Road, uh, they're waiting to see the impact of disc golf and, and what the parking is gonna be like, because that street's challenged now. But if they're gonna expand, they are gonna go out a little bit from that, uh, from that parking lot. Because there was, there was another rumor out there that they were gonna take the trees down, you know, the trees in between the upper and the lower. And so, that is not gonna happen. But if they do it, um, I don't, there's no, there's no definite plans, there's nothing out there. There was just talk of expanding it out beyond the end. It does cut out into the sledding hill a little bit, but I don't, it's a big chunk.
There wasn't a rumor that because one of our residents walked up to a DPW worker and specifically asked about the trees between the sledding and the top lot, and he said, "Yes, those trees would be coming down." There's an extra seventy-four trees coming down. I'm curious as to where they're gonna be coming down.
All right, so, um, it's seven, and so we'll do one more question, and I see this gentleman here. Yes?
Hi, uh, I had a similar question relating to traffic safety.
Yes.
Um, I find there are a lot of really straight, really wide roads with like, one lane near residential areas, or heck, even near Robey Park, where I don't feel safe crossing the street. Um, what are we doing to try and make it so that the roads are either windier, or there're bigger sidewalks, or heck, even adding a bike lane, so we don't need to add parking to Robey Park, so that people can safely go across the street and cars will go slower naturally?
Um, well, you've raised a very, you know, important issue, which is trying to make streets safer, but making them more pedestrian-friendly, and, so, um, you know, I, that's a important objective. I would say it's easier said than done. I mean, this involves a lot of money. If you look at, uh, the master plan, Imagine Nashville, which was completed, um, 2021, you will see that in, for example, the south end, uh, the, the Daniel Webster Highway and the environs, uh, there are plans to make it more pedestrian-friendly, more sidewalks, all the kind of things. Now, those are very expensive improvements. Same thing for Amherst Street. But I would suggest that you, you know, we meet with you, we, and the, and see where you find the most problem. And maybe we could, there are certain things we could do. You know, we have flashing crosswalks, things like this. I mean, the, the Public Works, when it comes to a busy street, and I'm thinking West, uh, West Hollis Street, uh, for an example, they don't like to just Broad Street, they don't like to just put up, paint a crosswalk, cause they feel like this is, it endangers people, it doesn't, because the cars do not stop for that. And, you know, so they're in, someone thinks they're gonna be okay, and they're out in the middle of the street and they get hit by a car. So, what we found in some places is that, you know, a flashing stop, you know, a thing, a flashing crosswalk, uh, works better. They cost, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars, I think. Uh, but we would like to implement more of those, and so if you have particular ideas in this area, um, you know, Public Works and the traffic people would be glad to kind of think about how to do things, you know, step by step.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, give your name to, and your contact information to Megan here. Now, I said one more question. But I said one more question, okay, yes.
Well, I have some parking questions. I, I agree, there, I, there's already a tremendous parking issue at Robey Park. Um, so, the last meeting I went to with the plans for the disc golf, um, they were saying that there's really no plan at all at this point in time to put in another parking lot. So, I just see it as a huge issue, um, and I'm also wondering about funding for that. And then my other question was, downtown, would it make any sense to have cars parked diagonally, the way they do in Manchester? And is there any plan to use the property across the street from CVS for something?
Um, well, the last question first, um, yes. So, the property across from CVS, I don't know if you, it's on Main Street, um, it's got, it's next to a very rundown building, but it, to put it politely, um, it's got fence around it. So, that has been sold to Neighbor Works, and, which is a very, um, well-established nonprofit that has, that does affordable housing. And they are in, they have some units in Nashville already. They're very well-established in Manchester and a few other places. So, the proposal there is to build forty-six units of affordable housing on that site, run and owned and run by Neighbor Works. Uh, again, a very good landlord. And they will be assisted, there'll be, uh, the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority is going to help out. The city gets an allocation of home funds, which is a kind of a federal, uh, funds that come to Nashville, and we allocate them to encourage affordable housing. So, a couple hundred thousand of home funds, I think. So, there is a plan for that. I can't answer the question about the parking near, um, the disc golf. I'll check that out. But what was the, the middle question was what?
I, I just wondered if it would make sense to park diagonally on the street like Manchester.
Oh, yes. I don't know, they, um, every time we have the traffic people look at that, they, they don't, they don't like it. And the city engineer, I don't know, uh, they don't like it. They don't think it'll increase parking that much. They think people backing out into the traffic is a problem. Manchester's Main Street is narrower. But certainly, we can always review it again. Anyway, so it's, now, it's almost seven-ten. I wanna say-
Why are you working?
I think that young woman over there had a question, she's had her hand up all night.
She's been leaning house.
Actually, I'll, I'll just, quick comments. We talked about the budget and parking and all kinds of different things, and, um, my concerns really are that we, we seem to too often go forward with something and try and figure out how to deal with the problems we knew existed to begin with after the fact. The, the parking downtown, the parking at Robey Park, both things, people have known for a long time, there's a problem, but we go forward and somehow hope it's gonna magically disappear, or that some, some, something will change. And it, I don't see how it does. The budget in terms of how we're spending on schools, the one thing I didn't hear anyone mention, the facility is important for sure, but, um, we've thrown money at, at schools in, in increasing numbers for a very long time, with our actual achievement levels continuing to go down. So, that, the idea that throwing money at something is going to change an outcome, I think is faulty thinking, whether you're talking about schools or almost anything else. And with regard to the disc golf, I, as in a butter, probably the largest of butter, I have had the luxury of, of researching this for a year now, because we suddenly became aware of it. And I think it's also faulty thinking to imagine that there are not going to be injuries, and that these injuries across the country are beginning to result in, in significant million-dollar lawsuits. The concern, certainly for the people, but as a taxpayer in Nashville, I think that we ought to be very careful, because this has become something that I'm starting to see in my research, that, um, even the, the, uh, the expert disc golfers who are, are creating these courses are backing up and saying, "This is a sport not unlike, uh, golf or football or baseball, that ought to have something that is a designated location that, um, is not appropriate in a multi-use park." And they're pulling them out of parks. So, I suggest that people in the city take a good look at that.
Can you give, can you give us a couple? All right, we will, could you give us a couple, could you give Megan a couple of examples? And we'll check those out.
Um, I, I sent things to, I sent, I sent information to, uh, Board of Aldermen, to the Conservation Committee, to Department of Public Works. I sent-
I mean, the ones, the ones that are being pulled out. That would be interesting to see.
Well, what I'm saying is, I sent that information to all those people, not more than two weeks ago.
All right. All right, well, um, thank you- All right, well, thank you all for coming and we'll try to do it again soon. And thank you, John. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Derek.
I had 25 people.
And Marty, where's Marty?